Period. No other changes. So effectively, the entire five-member committee would be appointed by the moderator, and not one by the Board of the Selectmen, and not one by the school committee. And this amendment took place after much consideration and discussion among the various town boards, and we feel that this amendment to the article would in fact provide for a committee that would be able to address the strategic needs for the town and come up with an information technology plan. It's something that hasn't been done in a number of years. We've described in the scope of the, in this comment here what the intention is for this committee. So, the key thing is that the town needs to come up with a master plan, and we believe that a committee of experts within the town who are residents can be identified and serve in this committee to take into consideration all of the needs for the town. Many of us are not experts on the cloud, but we believe there are many residents in town who are experts, for example, on the cloud, that can assist us in determining what are the best needs in the future for the town. And also, at the same time, take into consideration what are the best applications in general for administrative purposes, and what are the best systems controls? Security controls, for example, are of an important need for every department in town. And a committee like this, we're hoping would have members that would be knowledgeable of what is something the town should be doing, and describe the best practices that are going on in the industry. It's quickly evolving, and we think the town needs to get up to speed quickly by forming this committee, and coming back to the departments and the town meeting, and making recommendations for the needs of the town. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. In our attempt to help clarify things by projecting it, I realize that in this case, what we're projecting is not what you have presented, and I don't want to make matters worse. So I'm going to ask you to ignore what's behind the curtain. I'm going to read you the motion in front of you in its entirety, so there's some clarity around it. It's Article 16. It's submitted by the Town Government Study Committee. To see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws to establish an information technology committee consisting of five members, whose members shall be appointed by the moderator. The duties of said committee shall include, without limitation, to develop a strategic plan for the townwide information technology, to provide advice and recommendations to town boards, commissions, committees, and personnel on strategic information technology, planning, and budget requests, to assist town boards, commissions, committees, and personnel in evaluating information technology needs, to submit recommendations on all software systems and equipment needs, and to provide guidance with respect to the priorities among town departments. These members shall serve for a three-year term and may be reappointed. The committee shall annually provide a report to the town to be included in the town's annual report, and to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the purposes of this article, and to act on anything related there, too. I would now look to the chairman of the Warren Committee, oh, excuse me, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Do you wish to be recognized, Mr. Hurley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just one, the way this was written, was written as if it's an article, as opposed to the recommendation, and there were other recommendations in terms of funding that the Warren Committee had in it that is left out of this. So I think we might want to revisit it just a bit.
So, Mr. Hurley, while you're standing there, just so we can try to get this correct and move along, it sounds like after, in that last sentence, after the word "in town's annual report," we ought to strike the verbiage, and return to the verbiage that was in the original recommendation, which reads "and further that the town vote no appropriation under this article."
That's correct, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. So, Mr. Neely, I will look to you to see if you will accept that as an amendment? You do, thank you. For clarity, again, it was just to clarify the fact that there's no appropriation being made here, just as it was originally intended. Yes, Ms. Innes, do you wish to be recognized?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Emily Keys, NS, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, and Chairman of the Planning Board. I may have misheard you, so I just want to clarify it. I'm looking at the recommendation and three lines up, four lines up from the bottom on page 50, where it starts with "information technology needs." It says "to engage consultant services as needed to submit recommendations on all software systems and equipment needs." I didn't hear you read "to engage consultant services." I may have been distracted, so I just wanted to make sure that is in the recommendation.
Okay, so, no, you did not hear me read it, because it is not in the verbiage of the recommendation I was handed. Perhaps we can, we can fix that, if that's the intent of Mr. Neely and his committee.
Ted Hayes, Warren Committee Chair, Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member. The confusion here is because Town Government Study Committee was using the article to affect it as a blueprint for their changes. We can put the same changes that they're recommending into our recommendation. The Warren Committee accepts this change as a friendly amendment, and I'd be happy to read it in full.
Actually, yeah, that's an excellent suggestion, Mr. Hayes, and I'll read it in full, because I feel I'm fairly confused, but that's a terrific point. It's real easy to go back to the original recommendation to make those changes that Mr. Neely intended. Let me read that. Mr. Neely, pay particular attention. I want to make sure you're comfortable with it. So, the motion would be "recommend that the town vote to amend the general bylaws to establish an information technology committee consisting of five members, whose members shall be appointed by the moderator. The duties of said committee shall include, without limitation, to develop a strategic plan for townwide information technology, to provide advice and recommendations to town boards, commissions, committees, and personnel on strategic information technology planning and budget requests, to assist town boards, commissions, committees, and personnel in evaluating information technology needs, to engage consulting services as needed, to submit recommendations on all software systems and equipment needs, and to provide guidance with respect to priorities among town departments. The members shall serve for a three-year term and may be reappointed. The committee shall annually provide a report to the town to be included in the town's annual report, and further that no appropriation, and further that the town vote no appropriation under this article."
That is correct, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. I think we've got it right. But even more importantly, so now, folks, it's really everything you see there except for striking out the verbiage as follows, three by, and one by the Board of Selectmen, one by the school committee. So it's taken out that specificity about who the members are. Is everyone clear on what we have in front of us? Thank you. All right, does anyone wish to speak to the main motion? Mr. Lovely, you're recognized.
Thank you, Bern Lovely, Precinct 9, Town Meeting Member. I think this is a terrific idea. I do want to just ask two questions. Best corporate practices today in today's organizational structures would suggest that the better way to appoint a membership of committee, a committee like this, would be to provide for staggered terms, so that the terms of the members expire at different times, so that you retain some institutional knowledge as the committee ages. And the second, to me, it's a bit ambiguous about reappointment, and I would suggest corporate best practices today would also suggest that you have term limits, so that someone could not be appointed more than three terms of three years. So I just raise that and inquire whether that might be a positive addition to this article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Neely, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, Chairman of the Town Government Study Committee. The first question with regard to the term, we debated, you know, as we constructed this committee, and frankly, three years was sort of just a standard term. I have to admit that Mr. Lovely raises an interesting point about a staggered term. I don't believe, in my recollection of the conversation, that we discussed a staggered term, but it was just more in line with general practice, maybe not the best practice he outlined. And then the second point, in terms of the reappointment and the limitation, term limitation, that was not something that we ended up discussing. The feeling in general was that there would be turnover by the volunteers in this committee, which would result in part on staggered, you know, periods of service. But it, he's, you know, he's raised a valid point. There might be people that might want to serve for 20 years, but at this point, I don't have an answer, and I would have to, you know, if he has an amendment, I would have to poll the members to see whether people are interested in supporting a staggered term versus the term that are in here. So, this was to get the committee off and running, and we frankly did not consider the fact that people would want to serve for such a long period.
will deal with the staggered terms, and then further suggest that since we have several, Mr. Lovely's suggestion about term limits overall is a good one, but since we have several committees in town that have no such guidelines, that that might be something that we ask the Town Government Study Committee to look into for discussion and brought back here to a future date. But to, to address the more immediate needs, and again, this is only a suggestion from the moderator, Mr. Neely and Mr. Lovely, you can decide whether you're comfortable accepting this, I would say that what we can do to remediate this is at the very bottom of page 50, where it starts, the sentence "the members shall serve," add, strike the rest of that to say "the members shall serve initially," excuse me, "the members shall initially be appointed as follows: two for three years, two for two years, and one for one year, and subsequently be reappointed or new appointments for three years." It's my best shot at trying to do something quick and clean here. I'm going to read the whole thing over again. I, I, I'll do it, but I'll have you, would you say that you accept that as?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I've conferred with the committee and Mr. Lovely, and we are in agreement that that amendment proposed by the moderator is acceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. All right, for clarity, folks, I'm going to read the entire recommendation one more time. It is recommended that the town vote to amend the general bylaws to establish the information technology committee consisting of five members, whose members shall be appointed by the moderator. The duties of said committee shall include, without limitation, to develop a strategic plan for townwide information technology, to provide advice and recommendations to town boards, commissions, committees, and personnel on strategic information technology planning and budget requests, to assist town boards, commissions, committees, and personnel in evaluating information technology needs, to engage consultant services as needed, and to submit recommendations on all software systems and equipment needs, and to provide guidance with respect to priorities among town departments. The members shall initially be appointed as follows: two for three years, two for two years, and one for one year, and subsequently be reappointed or appointed for three-year terms. The committee shall annually provide a report to the town to be included in the town's annual report, and further that the town vote no appropriation under this article. Does anyone else wish to speak to this main motion? Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ted Deaver, Precinct 5. I just have a quick question about the language that you left out the first time you read it, and now is, is back on the recommendation about to engage consultant services as needed in an article where there's no appropriation. I guess my question is, can the committee commit the town to spend money to engage consulting services as needed as this indicates, or how does that work? That's my question.
My guess is that, that they cannot commit an expenditure without an appropriation for this year, but, Mr. Hurley, I'll, you go ahead and address it. Mr. Hurley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That is correct. There is no appropriation for this year. That's not to say that in a future town meeting, could not appropriate money for this committee, you know, and so it could well happen next year. There was a lot of discussion between the Selectmen and the Warren Committee in terms of whether there should be or shouldn't be funding for this year. Our impression was, in a startup committee, you know, let them get, you know, and in a tight budget year as well, to, you know, let them get up and running first, figure out what they need, and by that time, it'd be close enough to next fiscal year anyways. But there's also the possibility, if they did need a small amount of money, that the Selectmen does have a professional service budget that could fund small amounts potentially out of, you know, should it become necessary, but it's kind of unlikely that would happen.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the Warren Committee say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. After all that, it's unanimous. Article 17, which you will find on page 51. "To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2015, the operation of the several boards, committee, and committees classified as boards and special committees, and to act on anything related there, too. And it is recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading 'recommended.' Boards and committees: conservation commission; general expenses: recommended FY16 of $2,500. For total conservation commission: recommended FY16 of $2,500. Council on Aging: salary and wages, $211,710. General expenses: $34,071. Transportation expenses: $10,019. For total council on aging: recommended FY16 of $255,800. Historical commission: general expenses: $2,240. For total historical commission recommendation FY16 of $2,240. Personnel board: salary and wages $46,975. General expenses $1,770. For total personnel board recommended FY16 of $48,745. Planning board: salary and wages of $27,918. General expenses $2,850. For total planning board FY16 recommendation of $30,768. Warren Committee: salary and wages $9,035. General expenses $850. For total Warren Committee: recommended FY16 amount of $9,885. Total boards and committees recommended FY16 of $349,938. And that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $349,938 be raised from the tax levy. This will require a majority vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Ms. Agostino, you're recognized.
Mr. Moderator, you're not going to like what I'm going to say. Diana Tullio Agostino, Precinct 9, since we're both-
So far, so far, I'm good.
So, okay, well, since we both have the same year of birth, I just wanted to let you know that we both qualify now, that when we stop in at the Council on Aging, we get their services.
Well, thank you for that.
Just wanted to let you know.
What do those services include?
Well, it was interesting, because I often do stop in at the Council on Aging, and it started many years ago when I was on the Warren Committee, to see what, what do they really do? And the last time I was there, all of a sudden, it dawned on me, I said, "Oh, my God." I said, "I actually can come here for services now." And I know we all take the inner report when we receive it, and we read it from end to end, and it's just so amazing to me that some things still haven't changed, and I'm very, very concerned for the elderly in the town, as well as for our generation, the baby boomers, as we are moving into that horizon, shall we say. My concern stems from an awful lot that I've been working on and learning about when it comes to elder abuse, and it's often very hidden. It's, it's such a quiet thing. It happens because people aren't aware of what elder abuse is, whether it's financial exploitation, physical harm, or emotional harm. And emotional, of course, is the most difficult. So we heard a minute, you know, quite some time ago, that we've got $104 million business here in the town of Milton, and we still have a budget that's still around $255,000. And we know, in the past, Milton has a high number of elders, and with the baby boomers moving up, according to what the report says here, that there's been an increase in the younger senior residents using the services. There's also now the fact that they are to help those people who are still continuing to work, because of course, continuing to work, if we're going to live to 100, we might as well continue to work. So the time that we get to use these services is after work. So there's added work by the Council on Aging with early evening hours. It's very important, from what my unfortunate studies have taught me, that if someone can live in their own home independently or with private aides, that is the safest place for them, as long as they have a Council on Aging that's keeping tabs on them. And I don't know if people recall, but during the 105 inches of snow that we got in the town of Milton, you know, there were concerns with elders who couldn't go out and shovel. They had no one who might just be able to help them out the door. They want, there was an elderly couple who walked into the emergency room. They had opened their door, and when they shut it, the entire ice dam fell on both of them. And someone who I happen to know was in the emergency room that night, and she said she could not believe how hurt they were. I mean, there's so many needs for the existing elderly, not even talking about our generation, Brian, that I, I just feel, looking forward to next year, I, I see that, you know, there was even a $500 decrease in general expenses. I mean, it's just mind-boggling to me that so many years have gone by, these people have given so much to us, and when you think about abuse and services and the needs of the baby boomers, people have said to me, you know, "What you've learned in the last two years is really going to be more exemplified with the large numbers that we're going to be moving up with." So what I'd like to get a little bit of information, and it also, in the past, whenever we wanted to make a motion to increase the budget, we had to counter where we wanted to come from. I am not going to make the motion, but I would like to point out something that I've pointed out in previous years, which pertains to another budget. So I'm going to point it out for future reference.
Okay.
And there, and I actually, I won't even mention the particular account, because you all probably know what it is. But there are trust funds in the town of Milton under other departments. We don't have a trust fund for the Council on Aging, but we can't stop the aging process. We're all going to keep getting them.
Excuse me, do you mean revolving fund, or did you mean trust fund?
No, no, trust funds, trust funds. So trust funds are grantors provide the money to the town, there's principal, and then there's interest, and the trust funds read clearly what that money can be used for. And within this same book, there are trust funds that no money was taken out of in 2013 for very basic needs for other departments. I really want to beg the future Warren Committees, starting next year, to give serious consideration. I, I'm thrilled that they finally have their extra van driver. There's also been a large increase in the number of seniors needing transportation. I mean, if you read these two pages, the number one word is increase. So if we don't want to see an increase in elder abuse, and if we don't want to see an increase in what's going to happen to our generation, whether it's, you know, having to move out of your house, or being in your house alone, and not having someone to contact to know that you can get shoveled out of the front of your house, let alone the back of the house. I had an 86-year-old neighbor, and I will end with this story, and then give you my question. 86-year-old neighbor was so tired from being in the house that she went out alone to dinner. When she arrived home, the door was jammed from the ice dam. She didn't know the closest phone number wasn't on her to use with her cellphone. She literally, at 86 years old, in the dark of the night, on those icy streets, walked across to a new neighbor, who was shocked to find her at the door. So I just can't beg enough that we start thinking about ourselves, because I don't believe we've given enough to the generation that brought us to where we are today. And then my question is, I'd like to know exactly, the, the Council on Aging does a lot of fundraising, it's spelled out here, but I don't know how much. It would be great to hear from the Director of the Council on Aging, how much fundraising is added to their budget, as well as how much comes from the Copland Foundation.
And you are recognized, Maryann.
Good evening. I'm Maryann Sullivan, Council on Aging Director for 22 years, and very proud of it. I think the question was about fundraising. Is that correct, Diane?
Yes.
The Copland Family Foundation, what would the town of Milton do without them? For the last 12 years, $25,000 stipulated for the VN Fund. Every year with the stipulation, one-time money, but we're so grateful that we have received it every single year. Our transportation program operates at a $48,000 shortfall. We have to make that up through fundraising and donations. Copland is certainly our biggest donation. We also do various fundraising activities. Last year, we did a first-ever walk for Milton that raised money, and the seniors themselves send in donations, $2 if they can. Sometimes we get it in quarters, but they really, if they can do it- Sometimes we get it in quarters, but they really, if they can do it, make the donation. As Mrs. Agostino said, the numbers are increasing. The seniors don't ask for much. They have high property taxes. It's very difficult to be a senior in a town like Milton. All they're asking for is help to get to medical appointments. Some of them need five days a week to go to chemo. It's a different world out there. There aren't a lot of adult children who are able to help their parents. Everybody is working. They need to have a safety net, and that safety net is the Council on Aging. I certainly agree that the wonderful town we have here today, and I've lived in it for 39 years, is thanks to the seniors and residents who have made sacrifices. They support overrides, they appreciate public safety, they appreciate schools, they appreciate DPW, they appreciate parks. And it's up going before the personnel board, the warrant committee, the Board of Selectmen. I also have 2,877 signatures, I know this is an old-fashioned technique, but from town residents who support a full-time VN driver. It's the right thing to do. We're talking $35,000 in a $1 million budget. Council on Aging is funded less than 1%. We do all we can to write grants, to raise money. It's tough to get money nowadays, as you all know. We're asking for $35,000. These are your friends, these are your neighbors, they need your help, so I'm asking for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Ms. Hayes, you're recognized.
Ted Hayes, town meeting member, Precinct 3, warrant committee chair. I just want to point out, thank you. Thanks. Just want to point out that we have added that van driver to the Council on Aging's budget this year, as you will see from the notes, from our comments. And we were glad to do it, and if the Council on Aging puts together a proposal for additional services, we'll be happy to look at that next year as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation, the warrant committee say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's unanimous. Article 18. To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2015, for the operation, maintenance, and improvements of public works, and to act on anything related thereto. And it is recommended the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading "Recommended." Public Works. Public Works General, recommended FY16, $1,711,059. Vehicle Maintenance, $538,784. Storm Water Management, recommended FY16 of $509,826. For subtotal Public Works, recommended FY16 of $2,759,669. Solid Waste Management. Collection of Refuge, $482,304. Refuge Disposal, $400,000. Curbside Recycling, $601,375. Landfill Monitoring, $20,000. Solid Waste General, $70,365. Hazardous, Household Hazardous Waste Collection, no recommended FY16 amount. For subtotal Solid Waste Management, recommended FY16 of $1,574,044. For Total Public Works, recommended FY16 of $4,333,713. And that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $4,333,713 be raised from the tax levy. Of the total amount appropriated, the maximum sum authorized for salaries and wages is $1,133,191. The Public Works Department is hereby authorized to sell at a private or public sale with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, equipment that is no longer needed by the department. It is further authorized to exchange or trade in old equipment for similar materials in the usual course of its operation to provide for replacement items. This will require a majority of voters, anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation, the warrant committee say aye? Opposed, no? It's unanimous. Which you'll find on page 54. I'm just checking, make sure we don't have a revised recommendation, and we don't. Do we have a revised recommendation? No, I think not. Article 19, to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2015, for the Water Enterprise Fund, to determine how said appropriation shall be raised, whether by transfer from available funds, borrowing, or otherwise, and to act on anything related thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen, and is recommended the town appropriate $5,249,159 for the Water Enterprise Fund, that $509,781 be included in the appropriations from the General Fund for indirect costs and be allocated to the Water Enterprise Fund for funding, that the fund balances as of June 30, 2015, in the Water Special Revenue Fund, be transferred to the Water Enterprise Fund, and that $5,758,940 be raised and appropriated as follows. Water Enterprise Revenue, Rate/User Fee Revenue, recommended FY 2016 of $5,587,440. Service and miscellaneous revenue of $170,000. Investment income of $1,500. For total revenue, recommended FY16 of $5,758,940. Water Enterprise Costs. Direct Costs, Salary and Wages, $761,685. Expenses, $488,000. Capital Outlay, $365,000. Debt Service, $477,650. MWRA Assessments, $3,156,824. For Subtotals, Direct Costs, Recommended FY16 of $5,249,159. Indirect Costs, $509,781. For Total Water Enterprise Costs, Recommended FY 2016 of $5,758,948. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Mrs. Agostino, you're recognized.
Diana Tullio Agostino, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, I rise just so that...
I'm not sure if everyone can hear you, if you can get a little closer to the mic.
Sorry, Diana Tullio Agostino, Precinct 9. This is the first year that we now have a separate article for the Water and Sir Enterprise Funds, because in the fall, we had finally accepted the language. And the question are, if you want, I did write this all out, but now that we actually have Water and Sir Enterprise Funds, and you recall the big discussion over the last 25 years about small E, biggie?
I remember it painfully well.
Painfully well. So if we correct it this year, then we won't have to correct it in future years. So the amendment, which would be friendly, because we actually have enterprise funds, would be to capitalize in the second sentence, enterprise with a capital E and fund capital F. And just through the process, now on Water Special Revenue Fund, we've never had that language in here. We just have not had that language in here, because year after year, we were told, thank you very much, that we had enterprise funds. And whether it was semantics or not, we have to do things by the book. So I'm just thrilled that we finally got to this stage, and I can't wait one of these days to take a look at the infrastructure information, which I know was there, but I just haven't been able to look at it. So do you want a copy of which should be corrected, so that going forward, we actually, you know, reference them correctly?
Are we talking about the capitalization of the Es?
The capitalization of the Es and the F. It always was discussed as the Es, and the same would be in the second article, so I don't have to stand up again. And also, probably, the Special Revenue Fund, which if it didn't exist before, I'm surprised that we have all this money from it, but it's good that it's done finally.
So, Ms. Agostino, I see under the first paragraph of recommendation, two locations for the Es and the Fs.
Three.
Capitalization, is that correct?
Three. There's one on the second line, there's one on the third line.
Oh, I missed it. There's the third one, yep.
And then there's the Special Revenue Fund. Each fund is actually capitalized throughout the article, so once they correct it in future years, it'll just be nice and clean.
The chairman of the warrant committee assures me that they are comfortable accepting that as a friendly recommendation, so just for clarity, it's, in the verbiage, after the word "recommended," we have three locations where Enterprise Fund is located, those Es and Fs that are lowercase will now be uppercase, and toward the end, there's Special Revenue, that S in the R will now be a capital S in R.
No.
No?
Not there.
Ms. Hayes, you're recognized. He's informing me that it's not necessary in that last revenue part. Go ahead.
Hi. I'm not sure where to begin here. Ted Hayes, warrant committee chair, town meeting member, Precinct 3. The, I apologize for any inconsistencies in the text. We're entitled to use capital Es and Fs now, but I think if we ended up using the little ones, it wouldn't be a crime. And the, the, the term in the recommendations for the Special Revenue Fund is the term that was put in there by the consultant who helped us achieve this transition as a lowercase term to refer to what we had in the past, which we had called Enterprise Fund, years before capitalized enterprise funds were created by the state. So I hope that might help, but I'm happy to capitalize any Es and Fs in this article and the next that need it. But I think the Special Revenue...
Can remain lowercase.
...can remain lowercase, because it is a descriptive term, not a title. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So again, for clarity, all of those references to Enterprise Fund now have capital Es and capital Fs. And that is the recommendation in front of the board. Does anyone wish to speak to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation, the warrant committee say aye? Opposed, no? It's unanimous. To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2015, for the Sewer Enterprise Fund, to determine how said appropriation shall be raised, whether by transfer from available funds, borrowing, or otherwise, and to act on anything related thereto. And before I read the whole recommendation, please assume, everywhere I say Sewer Enterprise Fund, that's a lowercase e and a lowercase f, they are now all uppercase. It's recommended the town appropriate $6,855,253 for the Sewer Enterprise Fund, that $497,450 be included in appropriations from the General Fund for indirect costs and be allocated to the Sewer Enterprise Fund for funding. That the fund balance as of June 30, 2015, in the Sewer Special Revenue Fund be transferred to the Sewer Enterprise Fund, and that $7,352,703 be raised and appropriated as follows. Under Sewer Enterprise Revenue, the rate and user fee revenue, $7,150,203. Service and miscellaneous revenue, $200,000. Investment income, $2,500. For total revenue, recommended FY 2016 of $7,352,703. Sewer Enterprise Costs, Direct Costs, Salary and Wages, $624,444. Expenses, $204,000. Capital Outlay, $775,000. Debt Service, $181,556. MWRA Assessments, $5,070,253. For Subtotal Direct Costs, of $6,855,253. Indirect Costs, Recommended FY 2016 of $497,450. And for Total Sewer Enterprise Costs, Recommended FY 2016 of $7,352,703. This will require a majority of vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation, the warrant committee say aye? Opposed, no? It's unanimous. Article 21. To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the maintaining, repairing, improving, and constructing of ways under the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 90, said sum of any portion thereof to be used in conjunction with the money which may be allocated by the state for this purpose, to determine how said appropriation shall be raised, whether by borrowing or otherwise, and to act on anything related thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen, and is recommended the sum of $933,685 be appropriated for the purposes set forth in this article, and that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer be authorized to issue, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, bonds or secured notes in the amount of $933,685, that the town vote to accept grants under the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 90, in the amount of $933,685. The said reimbursements from the state, 100%, to be restored upon their receipt to the town treasurer. This will require a two-thirds vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Virginia Donahue King, Precinct 3. I have some questions on this that I would like clarified. On the comments, we're talking about the Safe Roots to School project, which is happening around the Glover School in my neighborhood. On Canton Avenue from Brick Road to School Street, and on Brick Road from Central Avenue to Cape Cod Lane, is included in these improvements. I wanted to know, the Safe Roots to School project was supposed to cost the town nothing. And so I wanted to know exactly how the money works on this, so that the funds that we're spending upon this are actually state funds, or town funds, or if you could explain that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, the chairman of the DPW, you're recognized.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, Joseph Lynch, Director of Public Works. Ma'am, you're absolutely correct. The entire construction project is federally funded under a federal initiative called Safe Roots to School, and it's a national project. What is not eligible for that is any of the securing of right-of-way, which would be easements or temporary easements, or any appraisals that result from that. There's an article later on at town meeting this evening, which authorizes the securing of easements. It's Article 26 that we'll be, well, hopefully hearing it tonight, perhaps Thursday. Hopefully tonight, sir.
I like your optimism.
I would too. And that money is obligated at the town to secure those easements, should they become necessary, and should there be costs associated with it. So it is eligible reimbursement under Chapter 90, using state funds for the town to secure right-of-way, but the federal project will not pay for it with federal funds.
Thank you, Mr.... Yes, you're recognized for the purpose of follow-up.
A follow-up on that is, so does that mean that, how much of the funds would be going to getting easements? Do we know that? And if we do, is that under this article, or is that under the later article?
The answer is yes. And what I mean by yes is that we have estimated on the affected number of properties... And what I mean by yes is that we have estimated on the affected number of properties, and I believe there are a total of thirty, well, I have my notes for Article twenty-six, but I believe it's thirty approximate properties, twenty-eight of which have temporary easements, which should have negligible cost, two of which require permanent easements, which are town-owned properties, and theoretically should have no cost. However, in putting our Chapter Ninety estimate together, we assumed out of the full thirty thousand, that on average, thirty properties, we figured five, you know, about five thousand dollars apiece would be the maximum, and we only put in the budget thirty thousand dollars total for acquisition. So at the end, the appropriation for the use of Chapter Ninety money authorizes it for that purpose, but if we don't use it, it'll simply go into other roadway construction on those listed roads.
Okay. I'll see you on twenty-six then.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. I refer to you as the Chairman, I guess it was really the Director, so I apologize. Would you rather be a Chairman or a Direct? No, never mind.
Director's fine, sir.
Okay. Okay, so, oh, Mr. Neely, you wish to speak to this motion? You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Rick Neely, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. I rise to raise the question of how School Street, which has surpassed Hillside Street as the worst street in town, is not listed among the streets, and I'm wondering if School Street would be covered by a different program, and I'm speaking of the stretch from Canton Avenue to Central Avenue. It has deteriorated extremely badly over the last twenty-five years. And the second question I have is, do all these streets end up with granite curbing from end to end? If so, is that driving the cost for these streets, and would we get more streets done if we did not granite curb the entire length of streets? Thank you, Mr. Neely.
Mr. Lynch, you're recognized.
Certainly, Mr. Moderator, members of Town Meeting. The School Street is in a deplorable condition, and the water main that is beneath that road is even worse shape, and that is actually on the forecast for water main replacement in next, construction season next year. So it would not behoove us to put a new service on it, only to rip it up and put a new water main in. Our Chapter Ninety program and our roadway capital program is carefully coordinated with our sewer infrastructure, our drainage infrastructure, and our water infrastructure, and beyond our own control, we work with National Grid with regards to their capital program for their gas mains. So we try to get all the buried utilities done first, followed up with roadway reconstruction thereafter.
Thank you.
On the second piece of it, granite curbing, we try to put back in kind what was there, with the exception of some of the very biggest and special projects, Central Avenue being one of those great exceptions, and where we were looking to get traffic calming techniques employed there, verticality, introduction of islands and refuge islands for pedestrians crossing the street, are techniques that you use to slow traffic down and to make it safer for pedestrians. So in those instances, we in fact made greater improvements by more sidewalks and more curbing. But mostly, you're seeing in-kind replacement of what was there, just in a better way. There are occasions where at handicap ramps, so we may have the two minutes sidewalks, but at handicap ramps, we have the, that's at intersections with tactile strips, those do get embedded in concrete and curbing, and that's an ADA requirement.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Again, I note that it would require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation, the Warrant Committee say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? It's unanimous. Article twenty-two. To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate to provide rehabilitation, replacement, or enhancement of the town's water system, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town to apply for, and use, federal, state, MWRA, or other funds for this purpose, to determine how such appropriation shall be raised, whether by borrowing or otherwise, and to act on anything related thereto. It is submitted by the Board of Selectmen, and it is recommended that the sum of five hundred thousand dollars be appropriated for the purpose of financing the rehabilitation, replacement, or enhancement of the town's water system, including costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow five hundred thousand dollars, under and pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Eight, Subsection Five of the General Laws, as amended, and any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, and that the Board of Selectmen be and hereby is authorized to accept and expend, in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants or gifts from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, or any other public or private funding source. This will also require a two-thirds vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Mr. Hiss, you're recognized.
Bob Hiss, Precinct Three. Just a question. So it looks like we're able to borrow five hundred thousand. I looked at our total debt picture that's on page eighty-nine. Can't imagine, it's the first time we've borrowed money. Do we list this MWRA debt under our debts here, and how does it get paid off, and does it get accounted for in this year? Just curious. Does my question make sense? Yes, no?
I think they're trying to come to grips with that.
Makes sense? Okay.
Mr. Moderator, I'll make a general answer, but I think the actual answer ought to come from the Town Treasurer, if he's in the room. But the reality is that as we incur debt within either the Water or Sewer Enterprise, that debt is in fact forecast in the future years, debt service. So this authorization this evening is for us to incur the debt, which would happen this coming year, which wouldn't have a payment until the following fiscal year. But the Treasurer could actually probably answer the specific question that Mr. Hiss
Mr. McGolliffe, do you wish to address? You're comfortable with the answer that... Just so people could hear you, would you mind? And your name and title?
Jim McGolliffe, Town Treasurer, Precinct Seven. We usually borrow this money, Joe, if it's low-interest loan or no-interest loan, and we do pay it off over ten years. Is there a question?
Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Yo, I'm sorry, Mr. Hayes, you're recognized.
Hi, Ted Hayes, Warrant Committee Chair. I think Mr. Hiss's question was, would he find that debt on that schedule? And the answer is, he would not. That debt is, the debt on the schedule he's referring to is town debt, and is not the Water or Sewer Enterprise debt. So I believe...
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation, the Warrant Committee say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Declare a two-thirds vote. Article twenty-three. To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate to provide the rehabilitation, replacement, or enhancement of the town's surface drain system, including costs incidental and related thereto, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the town, to apply for and use federal, state, or other funds for this purpose, to determine how such appropriation shall be raised, whether by borrowing or otherwise, and to act on anything related thereto. It is submitted by the Board of Selectmen, and it is recommended the sum of two hundred thousand dollars be appropriated for the purpose of financing the rehabilitation, replacement, or enhancement of the town's surface drain system, including costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow two hundred thousand dollars, under and pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, Subsection One, and Section Eight, Subsection Fifteen of the General Laws, as amended, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, and that the Board of Selectmen be and hereby is authorized to accept and expend, in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants or gifts from any other public or private funding source. This will also require a two-thirds vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Janet Evans, Precinct Six. I just had a general question having to do with this wastewater and stormwater management. It looks to me like, both from comments in the report, that we're going to have some enormous additional costs coming toward us in the next year, based on these new EPA requirements, and I wondered if perhaps we could have just a little bit more information about what that might entail, from either the DPW Director or from the Warrant Committee.
Mr. Lynch, you're recognized.
My pleasure. And I say that tongue-in-cheek. NIPD's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, it's an acronym of a federal mandate that was foisted upon smaller communities across the entire country twelve years ago, where they issued a five-year permit. We have operated under a seven-year extension to that original five-year permit, all the while looming in EPA in each state's environmental agency, and that means in Massachusetts, DEP, in this, in our case, have been hammering out what they think the new permit is going to look like. That permit has been issued twice for comment, and it has been twice pulled back and rehashed at the EPA level. It came back out for public comment this past fall, and the public comment period is now closed, and EPA and DEP are theoretically hammering out what's going to be the final language, which is likely to happen this summer, and be put in place with requiring towns to file what's called a notice of intent sometime in the fall and through early winter next year. So those are things that are looming in FY seventeen. It went without saying when we discussed Article eighteen, but you saw that the net public works operating cost went down slightly, but didn't increase. But what you saw was an entire new category called stormwater, which called out about five hundred and nine thousand dollars, and assigned it to stormwater. That's because things that Milton has been doing for years are eligible under the permit, things like collecting your household hazardous waste annually. Question was, pointed out that that was appropriated at zero. That's because it's part of stormwater now, always has been, and it's included in that line. Our yard waste collection, leaves and branches and grass clippings and whatnot, eligible. That's a big number, so we put it in stormwater. Sweeping of streets, cleaning of catch basins, mapping, and the various water testing that we do, and the various drainage work that we do. Those are all things that we've been doing on a regular basis, because the good folks in town here thought that was important years ago, and have continued to do those things. So we created that category as a point and a demonstration to EPA that, you know, Milton takes that seriously. So yes, the issue's looming large. Milton participated as part of a ten-member consortium, spearheaded by NEPA, Naponton River Water Shelter Association, along with Massachusetts Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, MAPC. We collectively, ten communities in those two agencies, put together two applications for Massachusetts Community Initiative Challenge Grants, and we got one and didn't get the second one. But in that grant, it formed the coalition, and more importantly, it singled out two communities to be pilot communities, to look at what is the financial impact of the current NIPD's requirements, the possible and quite likely NIPD's requirements, and how would towns begin to pay for those. Milton was one of the two pilots of those ten communities. So we had the advantage of using great consulting horsepower to determine that the things that we have been doing are worth about that half a million dollars a year, yet the obligation under the new permit, it's likely to be one point two million. So that's a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit looming, or question looming in the future. I can tell you that we're, I've been saying to the Warrant Committee for years, we fall a little bit short. We don't meet all the requirements of EPA, but we do the best that we can, and we're doing a lot better than most communities. The issue is large, is looming large. When the new permit comes out, we're going to be talking about that at great lengths next year, I'm sure. But in the meantime, we're dealing with some information that Milton was able to partake in, much unlike most of the communities in Massachusetts, who didn't have that advantage of having that grant to study it. I hope that answered the question.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Remind you, it's a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation, the Warrant Committee say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Declare a two-thirds vote. Passes. Article twenty-four. To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate to provide capital needs for the town sewer system, including costs incidental and related thereto, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town, to apply for and use federal, state, MWRA, or other funds for this purpose, to see how such appropriation shall be raised, whether by borrowing under applicable provisions of law or otherwise, and to act on anything related thereto. It is submitted by the Board of Selectmen, and it is recommended that the sum of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars be appropriated for the purpose of financing the capital needs of the town sewer system, including costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, under and pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Eight, Subsection Five of the General Laws, as amended, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, and that the Board of Selectmen be and hereby is authorized to accept and expend, in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants or gifts from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, or any other public or private funding source. This will also require a two-thirds vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this?
Mr. Moderator, just by way of clarification, under the comments section, if you will, there's a scribbler's error. It points out that the program is an outright grant of forty-five percent of the program cost, theoretically meaning it was a fifty-five percent loan. That was what our old program was, but under the new grant, it's a seventy-five percent grant with only a twenty-five percent loan that we're paying back. So that's, it's a better deal than it has been in years past, but I think it's just important for Town Meeting to know that it has improved.
Yes, sir, you're recognized.
I will come into the end of the Public Works Department articles, and before we move on, I would like to go back to page fifty-three on the comments section, and I would like to make a change in that, after the words, the Warrant Committee, I would like to add, and the Town Meeting members. And if you would read that with that addition, I'd appreciate it.
That'd be good.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to express my thanks and gratitude for that recognition from the men and women who work hard every day, and particularly this past winter. But thank you very much for the appreciation of Town Meeting.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? It will take a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation, the Warrant Committee...